Everyone, welcome to the August fifteenth Newmarket Town Council meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
That was great. You need to do that more often. First on the agenda tonight is public forum. Is there anyone from the public that would like to? Oh, I, yeah, do I have a motion to leave non-public or to seal the minutes?
Motion to seal non-public minutes from earlier this evening.
Counsel Bentley seconded by Counsel Weinstein. Please call the roll.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And Counsel Carmichael is excused from tonight's meeting. He had a job-related issue. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Please come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, my bekeeping mentor, Dan Wright, who helps me a lot with my bees. I think it's rather appropriate this evening that I have all these children behind me. Oh, excuse me. My name is Dennis Abbott.
Thank you, Dennis.
I'm a lifelong resident of Newmarket, more years than I want to count at this point. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about a group, which is the Newmarket Common Ground Group. And we are going to be having an event on November eighth at the high school, beginning at eight-thirty and going till noontime. And I'd like to invite each of you as private citizens to take the opportunity to come up and join with your fellow citizens in a discussion about the Newmarket school problem that we've been facing. I was invited to join this group, not because I have any children in the school system, but my mother graduated from Newmarket High School in nineteen twenty-seven or eight, I'm not sure, but it's eighty-six years ago. And I believe she was a valedictorian, as was my oldest sister, but I was not. But I am still here. My children graduated from the Newmarket school system, as did my wife, and I think that we all received a good education. And I think in the future, the children behind me, as residents of Newmarket, deserve the best opportunity for a good education that we can provide them with the help of the school board and with the help of the council and with the joint efforts that you folks have been endeavoring to bring everyone together on. Again, I was invited to join Common Ground, and I have not been involved in the school situation as an active resident. I'm kind of beyond that. My kids are grown and gone, but they thought I might be a, I don't know what kind of a source, but kind of an independent thinker. I will not give you or do I have an opinion on what we should do, but I know there are options available. And in going to the meetings for Newmarket Common Ground, I've discovered that we, as a group, can work together and hopefully we can bring the town together on November eighth at the high school, again at nine o'clock, to have a discussion. It's not going to be a meeting where everyone is going to listen, but it's going to be a facilitated discussion where we will have ten or more facilitators from around the state work with small groups to go into each various classrooms to have a discussion about what we can do to get beyond the school vote controversy, what we can do to ensure that we provide our children with the best possible education. The group does not have a position. I don't have a position, but I'm sure everyone on the group, not everyone, most everyone probably has their ideas about where we should go. But the group of ten people aren't going to make any decisions, nor are the residents of Newmarket going to make any decisions. But the object is to offer them the opportunity to tell us what they do like about the New Market school system, what they would like to see in the future with the Newmarket school system. So let me say that everyone is welcome to attend. We urge everyone to attend. It's very important that everyone attends. The product that we end up with at the end of the day is not going to be any decisions. What it will be is hopefully information provided to you people who are the decision-makers and the school board to help them make decisions with the input from the town, understanding what the townspeople value in a good education. As I said, they'll all be divided into groups. It's not there to be a bitch session. It's not there to tell us you want a new school or you don't want a new school. It's there, the purpose is to tell us what you value in a new, in education in the future. We are being facilitated by the Carcy School of Public Policy at the University of New Hampshire. Excuse me, when I talk, I start to cough. And it's called New Hampshire Listens. And they've done a good job in getting us off the ground and helping us to make decisions. But again, the ten people involved will only be there, probably one each, sitting at a table or maybe even not. I'm not sure how they want to do it. But this is for the townspeople, and I do invite each and every one of you to attend. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. If not, again, I'm just telling the town, go to common, NewmarketCommonGround.org and register for the event, or you can walk in that morning and register. And we'd appreciate seeing as many townspeople as we can at that event. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. I think he was saying there's not going to be any dogs at the meeting, just so everybody knows. Is there any, is there anyone else with public comment? Seeing none, public comment will be closed at seven fourteen. And I have the pleasure of reading a proclamation this evening for Link Together. So, you ready? Here we go. "The town of Newmarket by the Newmarket Town Council proclamation for National Make Your Mark Week, October twelve through eighteen, two thousand fourteen. Whereas National Make Your Mark Week is celebrated the third week of October, recognizing the power of kids to help others in their community and the world, and whereas during this week, young people across the world will be focusing their compassion on a specific social issue through a service project, youth clubs around the world have been developing compassion and the spirit of volunteering and philanthropy in elementary and middle-school-aged children, inspiring youth to become engaged, take action, and solve community problems. And whereas over ninety-five local youth volunteers from Link Together, working with the town government and local businesses, have planned, cleaned up, and are almost finished refurbishing a local pocket park at one of the gateways of the main street since two thousand six, and whereas the youth have presently raised nine thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars through fundraising efforts such as a candy bar sale, lemonade stand, bake sales, soup and cookies in a jar, and a scarecrow contest. Currently, they are working on their second coat drive to provide coats for needy families of Newmarket, and whereas the students have improved their public speaking, teamwork, writing aptitude, and mathematical skills by engaging in the various steps necessary to complete and implement this project, and whereas this past year, the children have continued to apply for grants and researched ways to improve communication in the community, the youth have worked for four years with Janice Rosa, chairman of the Veterans Committee on the honor trees in the front hallway at the town hall. We made stars and decorated them to honor past and present service members, and whereas the youth held their annual lemonade stand this past summer, raising money to go forward, excuse me, to go toward the purchase of a watering system for the pocket park and have planted a second tree in the park at the town of Newmarket's Arbor Celebration this year, and whereas the youth collected six hundred and two coats, scarves, hats, snowpants, mittens, and boots for our local shelters in our coat drive in November, collected seven hundred and nineteen pairs of jeans in their jeans drive in January, made forty Valentines for the Meals on Wheels program in February, collected two hundred and thirty-three jars of peanut butter in March for Newmarket's food pantry in our peanut butter and jam slam, and cleaned the pocket park and planted forty-three bulbs in April for the planting parterre. All of these were contests giving us a chance with, to win money for our town, and whereas the youth in the spirit of giving have made a snowman ornament and a thank-you card for each volunteer that serves on a committee for the town to recognize their hard work, and whereas the students have gained competence and confidence as they learn to work together as a team and see their projects coming together. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in us as the Newmarket Town Council, we do hereby proclaim October twelve through eighteen, two thousand fourteen, as National Make Your Mark Week in Newmarket, New Hampshire. This proclamation given at the town council chambers on the fifteenth day of October in the year of our Lord, two thousand thirteen." And I would say to that, congratulations to everyone. And I will sign this. I had to read it first. I had to make sure I read it right. I want to know more about that peanut butter slam jam.
Ree, would you like to come up and give you the?
I was really for you and the kids.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I don't know if it's appropriate, but thank all of you for all the work you did. It's very, very good.
Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make real quick, or no? Tony?
It's so nice to see you guys here. I was, I'm kind of surprised. I expected you guys to give a presentation tonight. That's what I've always seen when I've been sitting over there, but, um, thank you.
That's a lot of clothes you collected, by the way, and really a lot of very valid things, so. From all of us, thank you, and from the town, thank you all very much. It really shows a lot of, a lot of hard work. Next on the agenda, do I have a motion? Yeah, why don't I let you folks? Thank you, everyone, for coming. Now, we're back to a Newmarket Town Council meeting. Let's put something controversial on the agenda. Give people fifteen minutes to come down. Do I have a motion, please, to accept the minutes of September seventeenth of two thousand fourteen?
Make a motion, accept the minutes of September seventeenth, two thousand fourteen.
Counsel Bentley and Nazaro, seconds. Any questions, changes?
I have a question.
Counsel Weinstein? What page, please?
It's page eleven of the packet. And it's just, I'm sorry, I just need to find it. So, point two from March twenty sixteen is the heading, and then the second paragraph under that, it says, oh, no, I'm, no, the first paragraph. Counsel Nazaro pointed out that a voice from the district of candidate Cressentia Ann Healy was needed. And then there's another comment under two for March twenty seventeen. It was again pointed out that a voice from a district near the dam was needed, and I don't know if that's-
Yeah, that's not the exact words.
Kind of what, because there is no district? I, and I, I don't know if you want to-
Are meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could say from the area near the dam.
Yeah, I'm just like neighborhood, abutting the dam.
So that was all.
Yeah, I think you were looking for representation from a homeowner.
From someone that lives on the dam.
You wanted a homeowner or someone who's got a property there. I think that was the intent. Is there anyone else that has any changes? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero to one.
As amended, correct.
As amended.
Do I have a motion, please, to accept the October first, two thousand fourteen minutes?
Motion to accept the October first, two thousand fourteen minutes.
Pike? Pike and Bentley. Any changes or questions with respect to those minutes? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Staying absent.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero to one.
Please give us your report, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
As of yesterday, you should have all received the copy of the fiscal year two thousand sixteen annual budget. It is for the public and people following at home, available online. It's on the front page of the town website, newmarketnh.gov, and you'll be able to see that document. We have scheduled our first workshop for Saturday, October twenty-fifth. I put down nine AM. We could start earlier if the council would wish. If you want to start at eight to get out earlier, we could do that. And I will have all the department heads in to review their budgets, and we can just plug along. Then following, the following Wednesday, I believe it's the twenty-ninth, I have scheduled also for another special meeting to sort of finish it up and then to vote on it at the following council meeting.
I'm sorry, I was checking. I'm sorry, I apologize. What time is the meeting Saturday?
Right now, I have it nine, but if you want to, we can start at eight so you can get in and out.
I prefer eight.
Okay.
It says eight on the calendar. It says eight on the calendar.
We could do eight. So, we'll do eight.
Can we split the baby?
Do we still do the thing that the newest council brings breakfast?
I'll tell you what, I'll bring breakfast.
Nice try. Usually it falls on the town administrator.
I'll bring breakfast. Can we do it at eight-thirty?
Yeah.
When is the target end time for that?
Usually around noon-ish.
One-ish, I think.
Longer?
It was one to two.
I don't think we've seen noon too often.
Okay. Well, why don't, why don't we set, why don't we just see how it goes and, I mean, we'll finish them off by the second one. I don't think we've had a problem.
Yeah, usually Counsel Weinstein just asks about the first. That's sort of like the drop-dead emergency, if need be. That's, that's another Saturday. If for some reason we were here until eight o'clock on the Saturday and still didn't finish at the second meeting, I like to put that safety net in of the first. Basically, because you need to adopt a budget by the fifteenth. So, that's why we-
So, is it eight-thirty?
That's the only favor I'm really asking. I would, if people could go eight-thirty, I'd really appreciate.
Thank you for breakfast and thank you for lunch.
Hey, it's all on me.
I'll get the receipt.
I don't mind. That would be my pleasure.
So, okay, so we'll do eight-thirty on the twenty-fifth. We'll see everybody here.
I don't think there's going to be a problem. I think you cut the budget fifteen percent and you're giving the taxpayers good ol'z off on their taxes, so this should be pretty quick.
Not quite. Just at the last meeting, that I did ask, there was some question on the schedule of replacing vehicles. And one of the things is that the overwhelmingly comment I heard was that highway vehicles or public works department vehicles usually aren't replaced based on mileage, but years, just due to the amount of activity and the amount of activity that's done in different conditions. Second, it's not usually the engine that goes first in one, in a vehicle, but axles, body fatigue, et cetera, just because of the amount of wear and tear they use. On average, they trade their dump trucks, like we did last year, last week, every eleven years, so we're about on target a little earlier. And I just gave you a breakdown of where they fall. Newport on the high end with eighteen years, Farmington was fifteen, but, you know, Holden and New Durham were low at five and seven. What I'm going to do, though, is I talked to a couple of communities. They actually have formal written policies, so they know exactly when and the timeframe for every vehicle and that we're going to have that as a written policy that we spring before the council at some point soon.
One thing, Steve, when you, as long as you're going to go to that, maybe we can touch on the size of the communities and how many vehicles they have, you know, just so we-
Sure.
You know, have that.
Yeah, that was one of the things and that I ran into as well, is that there's some communities that are around that still have the old system of contracting on all of their work, and some even have that you run for the position of road agent and are elected, and then your company gets to do all the plowing in, in this community and all the work. Kind of an iffy sub-topic, but we'll discuss that another time. So, I will get that information, though.
Yeah, just like, you know, if one town has got X amount of square miles, how do we stack up? Do they have more state, you know, plowing?
That's what I'll do, is I'll try to figure out the number of mile of-
Closest circle on all the- Oh, I apologize. Counsel Bentley and then Nazaro.
Well, because there's another piece of that, too, like certainly like Newport and certainly Moultonboro where I was this weekend, will have probably zero state help. So again, you're not comparing apples and oranges. I just caution us, no matter what number Steve gets us, how many miles of roads they have or how many miles are on their vehicles, we don't know, you know, what a way it gets plowed by the state. We plow it also, but the state does it. And, you know, this state rode up to Hiltons on Grant Road, and, I mean, there's other things that, there's a lot of variables, so don't go just by, by just the mileage.
I think that's why we need the context. He needs, you know, we need to get the context so we can put it all together, hopefully. Counsel Nazaro?
So, I'd agree. It's also type of road. It's, there's all that information. So, I usually don't rag on the police department and not rag-
I haven't finished my report.
Oh, sorry. Save that for later.
We'll get there. Thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, that's all.
One of the things that I just want to let you know that we're working on is, one of the larger tools, just in general, but really in assessing tax collecting and planning department use are the tax maps. These maps are the recording of all the lots in the community. Currently, we're working with Stratford Regional Planning and updating the updated version shortly. These should be done annually. Every year, we should send deeds in. It's one of those items that was cut from the budget quite often, and the last time we did this was two thousand eight. So, there are a number of subdivisions that weren't, so if somebody came in to look for a map of a neighborhood, you may not even have a neighborhood on there if it was built between now and this year. So, we, this is, hopefully will get us on a schedule that we just send in the deeds annually and start updating them automatically and just, it's like a subscription service. So, we won't run into this again. And that's all I have on my written report, and I know there's a question about the police.
Police, Counsel Nazaro.
Can I ask a question on what you just said, anyway?
Sure.
Should be done annually. Legally required to be done annually, generally accepted practice to be done annually?
There is a requirement that we must have tax maps, accurate tax maps. It doesn't say how often. It's just that we have to have them. It's an old law that never was updated.
Okay. So, are we out of compliance with state law right now?
I would say, yes, we're not, we're not accurate. Yeah.
Okay.
So, we try to update, that's why we need to get them updated.
Okay, thank you. As for the police department comment I started making earlier, prematurely, apparently, my apologies. So, there's a thing in here about working dog foundation grant.
Yes.
And big fan of working dogs. Had some attached to my unit when I was overseas. My concern is, as I'm reading this, it is an annual grant, a single year, that the money for food, and I assure you I know that working dogs are not cheap, will come out of the first year, and that, that we could get thousands of dollars' worth of drug season money forfeiture, but thousands is not going to cover, like, unless it's tens of thousands, we're not covering the cost of an additional, for lack of a better term, piece of equipment or dog, a working dog. So, my concern is, are we going to find the money within the budget long-term, or is there a pressing need for this that is requiring in addition to the police budget?
Well, there is a need for this.
Do they have one in the past?
They did have one in the past, and the chief of police has budgeted it for the fiscal year sixteen.
Okay.
You know, we will be reviewing at that point, and I can tell you, I mean, the police department budget's up one point five percent. And we are talking, it's not tens of thousands for, we're talking lowest thousands for food, and I know he's gotten donations already from veterinary services and items like that.
Yeah, it says the donations are going to cover the first year.
He's getting them for longer terms as well.
Are we, look, final question on this. Is this a regular patrol officer, or are we adding a human being to the force?
We're not adding a human being.
Okay, thank you.
I shouldn't assume, but do the dogs usually stay with one of the troopers?
It does. Stays with the officer to build trust and those kind of items, so yes.
It's going to live with them?
Yes.
That's what I thought they-
Is this a working dog or just, like, detection?
I guess my, I don't, I'm not sure clear on the difference between-
So, detection or like bite?
No, bite. No bite.
Just detection?
It's detection.
Thank you.
I think in the past, when I've read about this, you know, they, I guess, it's normal practice for, that's why I ask, for one of the, whomever is working with a dog the most, I guess, or has that bond, they live with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if they're like a police dog, we don't have to get them, you have to kill them and stuff.
I get, the only reason I brought it up is I'm assuming that's not going to be, well, I shouldn't assume anything. There will be a cost associated with that other than the food? I would assume not.
No.
I'm just asking.
No.
And then they generally spend the day with the trooper in the place?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sure we'll have more discussion about that. Anyone else have any questions? Counsel Weinstein?
On page thirty-two in the public works department, Clementance, and I think this may have been brought up at another meeting, and I didn't go back and look at the minutes, but the numbers just really struck me that we're, the budget for vehicle maintenance is twenty thousand dollars, and we're at sixteen-six.
I think I asked that one at the last meeting.
Yeah. Yes, it was reduced at a significant rate last year. We had some equipment that we need to fix, and I can't remember the exact piece, like, what happened to the vehicle off the top of my head. I'll have to get that. But there were some significant repairs that needed to be made on some vehicles.
Did he say that was a timing issue or not? I can't remember. You might want to, I just can't remember. Well, one was eight for a thousand dollars for the sidewalk thing.
The trash.
Trash truck.
The roll-off.
Roll-off.
There was an issue with the roll-off. I'm not sure of the number off the top of my head.
While we're on the same basic page, and I don't see any lights, just a couple of small things. Diesel fuel, if you look at the cost, it's way up in gallons, and I was just going to ask, at least it seemed to be up, from twenty-four hundred and fifty to three thousand, which I know it's early and everything, I just thought I'd bring it up because it, those are the things I usually key in on. I don't know if there's a big reason for that, but I thought I'd mention it. Seems like gas, it seems like gas has gone down in price, and the gallons they've used is actually less, at least based on what I'm looking at here. But diesel is considerably up, so anyway, I just thought I'd ask. And then the other question I had was DPW overtime is double last year, and I might have brought it up at the last meeting, I just don't remember, but I just thought somebody should be looking at that. I don't know if, again, that was the timing, and there was one question that I think Counsel Carmichael asked, when they do detail work, Steve, and maybe it got answered and I forgot, but when they do detail work with the police, we get compensated by the construction company or whatever, or PS and H or whomever it is, do we get, does DPW get compensated when we have, when they're out there with flags and whatnot?
If it's our, only, we only flag for our own projects. If it's another project, for example, the paving that was going on, that the state was conducting, we were not providing them with assistance with the flagging. That was their own contracted flaggers. We only have, for, DPW would only be out there for our projects, so that'd be their regular work schedule.
So, if they're helping, I'm just, I understand, so if they're helping a construction company do some work, just if they were, they would, that's on us, that we're just-
No, we don't. We don't help construction companies with detail work.
So, they didn't help at all on the sidewalks they were putting in, weren't they doing a little bit?
That was our project, though. With detail work, the only way we would make money, the police make money on detail work if they're detailing, doing detail for an entity that's not the town. And actually, we still have to bill, we do internal billing for the town. We have a certain rate that we bill into companies that cover the cost of the officer retirement benefits, the vehicles, administration costs that we, then in return, the company has to pay us. That's usually done for Fairpoint, PS and H, Comcast, those entities. The sidewalk work, that was a town project, so it was part of their normal shift, that they were helping reduce the cost of the project by providing them with some assist- it was actually our work- actually our work. We did 90% of the work. The other company did the granite work.
Okay.
So.
And let's see, I just had one, I think, one other question. DPW. The water budget. 52% is expended? Was that, was I reading that wrong on page 33?
Nope. The reason is, we have to do some transfers from their capital reserve funds to offset some of the associated expenses with McIntoshwell, the legal items.
Because it jumped out.
It did, yeah.
Big time. Counselor Nazaro?
So let me just get what you just said straight. So we're spending money on a capital project out of our operating fund for water, and we're going to go back and reimburse the operating fund from the capital reserve? Why wouldn't we just approve the capital reserve expenditures initially?
Because I have to come into the council every week for every bill to withdraw that money, instead of having one time say, look, we need to transfer these funds over to there.
Couldn't we just say not to exceed for the entire project?
No. The capital reserve, you guys are the agents to expend. So we can't have a, you have to actually have the final number before you withdraw that money.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a couple of little ones. Page 52, recreation. And I'm sure this is just clarification. The, is the revolving account on target?
Yes. 90%.
It said percent used, because I know it's a timing thing a little bit because we changed. Can you just explain?
Yeah. The rec revolving, why 50%, 54% of it has been expended, is that the number one item which takes up 50% of that budget is the summer recreation program, is the camp, summer camp program. So this is right on target for the amount to be expended. They don't have any much, the large items for the rest of the year. So that's, that is on target.
Okay.
Much like the cemeteries, you'd see a lot of expenditures come after May because they do their maintenance before Memorial Day.
Okay. So we're, it says percent used recreation. The first one was 13. And then, I knew there was going to be some timing issue with this because we switched over, but I'm...
And actually, this is what you'll see in the future. 13 is the, is where the general administration, which is there throughout the year, it should be right up that number. The rec revolving, though, is you have most of the programming at the beginning of the fiscal, well, you're actually in the middle of the fiscal, at the beginning of the fiscal year, the program is already going on. For the first, for those two months, August, July and August is the big portion of their budget. So that's being expended. So that's why you see such a large number there. And again, another example would be on the flip side, snow removal budget. You don't see anything going out of that line item until, hopefully December, until March. And then you'll see that one usually wiped up. It's just, it's a timing.
So just real quick, take us through this. If you look at the budget for rec revolving, the budget was 191.
Yes.
And year-to-date expenditure is 103.
Right.
Amount remaining is 87.
Right.
And so is it, do you think by the end of the year, we're going to be, you know, at 191-ish or is it...
Expenses, my, my goal would be for expenses to be lower because you want to have some to rebuild the fund balance there. Because this is separate from the general fund. But again, the largest portion of that 191 is used because it's the summer recreation program. The 87,000 funds the remainder of the year's programs.
Okay. Well, there'll be a little bit of a learning curve on this.
Is the, are the funds that, so camp funds come in in May and June. So is that reflected?
In the revenue section. Yeah.
From the previous year. So that's not in this. Yeah.
Right.
So it'll be replenished.
Correct.
Come the end of the fiscal year. Right? Okay.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
Counsel, is John's thing not working? Counselor Bentley, do you have a question? Did you have a question or?
No, I had an unplugged computer.
All right. I just want to make sure. I don't want to leave anyone out.
And a pizza down below.
All right. So we're all done with that. Committee reports. Does anyone have any committee reports to, I know there was a DM meeting.
Yes.
There was a what?
A DM meeting. It's not like, it's not like having a dog come to a Saturday meeting, I might add. But I'm, come on, that was a little... Go ahead, Dave, would you?
Sure.
Take it away.
First, the new, the new DAM Advisory Committee had their first meeting October 6. And it was getting the membership up to speed on what the objectives were. We talked about the meeting we had in August with a member of the DES about, you know, what, what things Newmarket potentially might be doing. It's in the administrator report. The other things I would add is that Peter Wellenberger was, was elected as chair. And Dennis Abbott, who is here tonight, was the vice chair. And so, you know, they, we have a couple of deliverables to work on pretty quickly. And I don't know if there are any other questions, but that's, that's what's happening.
Just because I watched some of that and we talked about it a little bit, Steve, you may want to memorialize the gentleman who's no longer with DES. His name was?
Yeah. And, and I talked to, actually chatted with Diane this afternoon, as I mentioned I was going to. And he's not gone away, but he's not as, he's not working on the project anymore. So.
Right. He's switched departments within DES. So he's still reachable.
And the only reason I brought it up is because there were certain, I think...
Understandings.
Yeah, positions that may have been taken by him that you may want to memorialize, which I think is really important for the town as we go through this process, because someone down the road, whether he's still in the organization or not, may not have all those recollections that they're going off of.
Yeah.
I don't know if that made sense.
Counselor Pike, I know, is I memorialized that, an outline of what we set at a meeting and what our goals would be.
Yeah. That is a correspondence that Steve sent. And I mentioned that. I, I still think it would be worth, but I, I think, and this is something Diane and I discussed today, is that as we perhaps have another meeting of the advisory committee, work out a little of detail about, you know, perhaps when we start to meet with some engineer period, people look at the RFP. As we firm it up a little bit, the information and the things we talked about with Chuck in August, I think we, we should probably seek a meeting with the, the person who's currently in charge at the DES and sort of saying, you know, this is, this is what we understood.
This is our understanding.
This is what we've done. This is where we're going with this. I think it would be good to form a new...
Funny how people have different recollections.
Well, and it's just been incredibly valuable to have the relationship with, you know, he's come to a lot of the DAM meetings, and he's been a very positive figure in our efforts. So I think it would be good to identify whoever the equivalent is in the new organization moving forward.
Basically, it's a way for us to cover our...
Right. Yep.
...behinds. Anyone else? Committee reports? Counselor Weinstein?
The Conservation Commission met last week on the 9th, and it was a relatively short agenda. They're monitoring the easements or some of the easements in town. And they did monitor Silverman Schneer and have plans to monitor four others. There's a, I just wanted to pass along a little bit of information. There's a workshop put on by UNH Cooperative Extension, forest laws for municipal officials. There are two options for that. If anyone's interested, I can forward that information to you. And then the other, they brought up a couple of concerns. One is the turtle signs that are still up. Ideally, the signs would be removed, would be up from May 1 to August 1 to try to alleviate sign fatigue. I guess, you know, like deer sign, you know, you see the deer signs, you just stop paying attention to them. So turtle signs, there are concerns about that. And then the other question was in relation to, and this is just something I'm passing along, really, but in relation to excavation that's going to happen on Bay Road, because the Conservation Commission had gotten a notice about it. And it just came up in conversation that when they replace sewer covers, there's some, there are sewer covers that can be added that have a gasket to alleviate flooding of the sewer lines, or, you know, alleviate water getting into the sewer lines. So I wanted to pass that information along. And Jeff Free, I can't think of his last name, who's the vice chair, said that he's seen those in Portsmouth and hasn't seen them in Newmarket, and just wanted to pass along that those are an option. And...
Who would deal with that? Sean?
I'll have him look at it.
Anything else? Counselor Nazaro?
Who would take the turtle signs down?
Rec, and that's, I mean, it's the busy time of the year. We haven't had a chance to get over there yet.
The deer.
And I don't think...
Before they get shot at.
And I don't think that that was originally the, the plan when they bought the, when they bought the signs and when they put up the signs. I don't know that there was a plan to take them down. So that is new. And, you know, there was some conversation at one point about having a Conservation Commission member do that.
Yeah.
Which personally, I think is a liability. You know, somebody on, I just have this vision of someone on a stepladder, you know, on the side of Ashland Road, and I think it's dangerous.
It seems like a couple hours of work to take some...
I know it's a dumb question, but is there any, I'm sure there's fatigue, but does it, would it really cause distress to leave the signs up?
I think what they mean fatigue, they mean that...
Ignore them. I get that. But I'm just saying, if there's certain areas where, I guess you have frost heaves, you have deer crossing, you have certain things, you know, I, I just brought it up because I don't know, you know, how much of a, you know, every time they have to put them in, take them out.
Yeah. The only other thing would be, if one year, somebody does not remember to put them back up.
Well, that's why I'm saying, is there a, is there some imperative reason that people take those down or not?
Most communities I know, they don't take them down. You can see them up. If they're not temporary signs, they're usually up all year. So.
Tony, are these, I thought I saw one. Are they foldable?
Some of them.
Some are.
Not, not all of them. Some of them are hinged. And I think that if, if it's a problem for the DPW to do it, or if it doesn't make sense, or, you know, whatever, if there are time constraints, then I could certainly bring that back to the Conservation Commission. I don't know that they would, they would, I would think that they would entertain that conversation. I think it's really just a question of wanting to know and having...
August 1 till about end of September is the paving reconstruction period. So yes, they do not have an hour in there because we don't want them to do the overtime.
Hey, I'm just saying, I've heard about these turtle signs for three minutes now. I understand the importance. I just wanted to like...
As soon as it quiets down, we'll have them look at the turtle signs and figure out what we can do.
And you might, and if other, and if other communities keep these signs up, is it really going to be the end of the world? I don't know.
Leave them up or just cover them all?
I don't, you know, I don't know any, you know, I mean, listen, I, I know they, and it's the same with the deer. There's certain times they're more active. But at least it would familiarize people that, that these areas, I mean, I know on New Road there's an area where there's a crossing. And I've talked about my lovely wife moving a big, huge turtle across the street. That wasn't the word I was going to use, but I decided after all the words that have been used tonight, I would use a different word. But anyway, I don't know. If, if it's a big deal, how many of these signs are there? When you add up all the deer and turtles?
There's six. There's six. I mean, there's not, they're not signs all over Newmarket. There's six signs.
I mean, do we have a lot of deer signs and stuff like that, too?
Usually, a state puts up the deer one.
Do they? And do they stay up usually all year?
They stay up all year.
All right. Well...
I've noticed a similar deer sign, these turtle ones.
I believe this one of the way, went away.
That being said, Planning Board, Counselor Wright?
Yeah, we had a planning board meeting last night. I wasn't attend all of it, but I'll give you a breakdown what happened. Shearwater Investment Corp., that's Two Forks Road, they had a continuance on their development. Also, the Hayden Family Broker Trust, it was a public hearing for application for subdivision. They had 10 lots, and that's 74 Bald Hill Road. And also, the Newmarket Housing Authority came before the planning board on installing a solar array, and that'd be 34 Gordon Avenue. And then also, there was, our Acady Engineers came before the planning board to discuss some violations on 13 Water Street. And that will be before the board, I believe, at the next meeting with the November 18th to work out some of those violations and get that project completed. And I believe you all got a letter from Tim Nicholas. Did you get the letter?
I received, I received a letter and replied. Do you have a copy of it in your boxes?
It was in the box.
Oh, yeah, I saw it.
Is, is that going to happen, do you think? Do you think it's all going to finish?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, there is some disagreement, and he's willing to work with the planning board, and the planning board is more than willing to work with Tim on this, to get this resolved.
Good. You hitting your button?
I'm going to. If nobody else has a comment, I was waiting, because I'm going back to the, there's one thing I meant to ask, and I...
Go ahead.
On the, on the DAM committee, since some of the, some of it may be sensitive, do, what, what about minutes? Diane had said maybe, you know, just recording it and keeping a record, but should there be minutes taken from?
The law, the law is written, minutes must be taken of all meetings. Recordings do not constitute minutes. Have it on paper.
Yeah, and I think Diane said she didn't mind giving you a basic overview, but she didn't want to get into taking detailed...
Minutes need to be a summary of what happened at the meeting and any motions and votes taken at the meeting.
So what he's saying is, do you want to handle that?
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
That's what I'm getting at.
That's what I've been driving at.
And last night, we had our, I think, third joint advisory committee meeting. I thought Randy Bell provided a lot of information for the public as well as the committee with respect to, there was a nice stapled synopses of all the agenda items. And just briefly, we saw some actual contracts of tuition deals, which was helpful to at least see how they're crafted and some of the complexities. We discussed enrollment projections and demographics, which I think was also fairly interesting, just because, you know, there's been a lot of debate over the size and the, the growth of the community. And he provided all those numbers, along with the superintendent, Mike Martin. And then he reviewed the project frame, framework and timeline, which I think, based on some of the additional work, he said may be extended a little bit, but didn't really get into specifics until he really gets a handle on it. He did have a structural engineer go through the junior and senior high school, I believe it was yesterday or within the past few days. And I don't believe he gave us an evaluation, but they are looking at the structure to see if it's worthy of renovation, I'm assuming. And let's see, our October 28th meeting, we're going to start looking at building options and setting up focus groups and public forums. And what else? Oh, he had reached out to Epping and Dover, and I believe he's waiting to hear back from Dover. And I believe he had, had a discussion with Epping, a preliminary, and he will keep us apprised. Did that sort of cover it, Dan?
Yes.
Did I leave anything out? So that was the joint advisory committee meeting. It was yesterday. And I think the next meeting is a week from next Monday because I think Tuesday is Election Day. Isn't it?
Tuesday, three Tuesdays from yesterday's election.
Well, aren't we meeting, I think the, our meeting is a week from Monday, isn't it? Did I miss that? The next, I thought he scheduled it for November...
That's in a couple weeks. There's a line of 15th.
Well, I thought it was a week from Monday. Okay. Because we've been doing it every other week, so.
Week from Monday would be the 27th.
Because there's that extra week, just like there's...
You get two weeks between.
Yeah. So, okay. So it is the, I think it's, it's sort of be the first, I'll get, it'll be on the website, but I think it's the Monday before the election. I could be wrong, but I think that that's what, that was the final, final. And that's about it? And that's about it. That being said, next on the agenda, we have nothing under old business. I'm assuming at some point, we're going to hear about the, um, whether or not we're going to include, what's, what's the road that we've been waiting to hear about?
Harvest Way. Harvest Way.
Is Harvest Way ever gonna, I know you, you said there were going to be other-
It's closed students.
I'm just-
And we still maintain it at this point, but, I mean, we still do-
You said there were a couple of other ones in there, too, right?
Yeah, I've got a bunch of comments, I'll get it answered. One, we have to do deep research on these, because, and the attorney's office is doing them, it's, it's a mess.
I wasn't rushing it.
No, no, no. We want to make sure we do it right, so we don't get stuck with something. And the issue there is to remember, a big portion of the road is not in New Market, and we're trying to figure out an agreement, and there also may be a conflict with our attorneys because of the fact that it was written by the attorney for the other community back in two thousand and three.
Did they use our attorney for that?
Our town attorney is the same as their town attorney, yes.
Okay, all right, just, yeah, whatever. I just figured I'd ask, since it's been on-
It's a, it's a problem, yeah.
We should probably just take it off the, uh, the thing, because it could be, you know, two thousand and fifteen by the time we get to this. Under new business, we have resolution two thousand and fourteen, fifteen dash eighteen, and, uh, we're going to, um, need a motion to suspend the rules, just want to get that out of the way. Authorizing the town administrator to enter into a contract with Connery Associates for the Economic Development Consulting Services, whereas the New Market Economic Development Committee would like to hire the services of a consultant to create an economic development strategy relating to the continuing care facilities, excuse me, relating to continuing care facilities, business slash office space, recreational development, and reviewing the B-three zone and Route one fifty-two, and whereas the Economic Development Committee received three proposals, and whereas the Economic Development Committee recommends to the Town Council that it secure the services of Connery Associates for the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, now therefore be resolved by the New Market Town Council, that it authorizes the town administrator to enter into an agreement with Connery Associates for Economic Development Consulting Services for an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. So, do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Make a motion that we suspend the rules in order to consider resolution twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen dash eighteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Dale and Bentley, uh, Dale, Pike and Bentley, um, do you want to give an, oh, we have to, please call the roll.
Councillor Wright?
Aye.
Councillor Nazaro?
Aye.
Councillor Bentley? Councillor Weinstein?
Aye.
Councillor Pike?
Aye.
Councillor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
There's actually a really good reason to suspend and put this one, there really is, in all honesty. Do you want to give a brief overview, Steve, or what would you like?
Sure, the, um, as the council knows, the Economic Development Committee requested to, that they be able to hire a consultant to assist them with, basically looking at some ideas that they, that came from the QAS, uh, study that was done earlier this year. Some of the recommendations they had was, you know, continuing care facilities in the community, smaller business space, um, I know, Councillor Nazaro and the committee and some other committee members brought recreational development in areas, and also just reviewing the B-three and the Route one fifty-two area with, you know, what may be the future use of gra, the gravel pits areas and those kind of items. They wanted to really delve more into the detail and find out what the impact of some of these items would be, and, um, benefits, and, um, you know, costs associated that they may have. So, they requested that we went up for, or RFP for the consulting services. We did receive three proposals. One was from, yeah, Connery Consulting Group, second was from RKG, and then we had one from, I always get it wrong, our net development group. And after reviewing them, the Economic Development Committee recommended that Connery really best fit the needs of the committee for this study. Uh, one of the things that they, you know, if anything, there's, and it's sort of, this is a dual-track situation. The planning board is also trying to be updating their economic development in certain chapters of the master plan, so this is sort of also to assist on that process as well. And if any ordinances or situation may not have to come out of this, master plan part would be updated as well as, uh, other outcomes, so it's, it wraps into two items at once. And to suspend the rules, they just, you know, we really want to get this moving, and-
Can we just schedule the meeting? We're trying to-
Right.
Something November-
First week in November.
And just, uh, it was unanimous, just so you know, the, the, we met last Thursday, Phil, I think we had almost the whole committee there.
Just one person was there.
Yeah, which was, which was good to see. And, um, I think the general synopsis was Connery was going to, um, really have multiple meetings with our group. He's working, I don't know if it was in his RFP, but he's, or RFQ, but he's working with Green and Company, one of the larger, um, senior housing firms in Massachusetts right now on a reuse, so he has good experience there, and I, I think he did a really good job in the past for us, so, anyway, just a, a little overview. Any questions, or, Bill?
So, I'm glad to see that it's not just senior housing we're looking at, but a bunch of things. My question is, the fifteen thousand dollars, where is that coming from?
Good question. After the, you know, the economic development budget's only two thousand dollars.
Right.
We'll have to find the money somewhere else and transfer it in. Where?
Yeah, I'm just, do we have that money to transfer?
We can find that, we can find thirteen thousand dollars in the general operating budget to be able to cover that.
And at some point, we'll figure out what it will be.
Yeah, I mean, we found the money for QAS, I mean, that must have wiped out the first two grand, actually.
Oh, that wiped out a long time.
What was he about?
Ten thousand.
Yeah, so, I mean, I mean, I think we're getting a lot of value for-
I'm not saying it's not valuable, I'm just asking where the money is.
We can find, we'll find it.
Do you need help?
That's next week we get to do.
I mean, the real, the real, just-
Is that just here, Ed?
I, I think the real purpose is, before we start, you know, changing zoning and laws for the town, it would be nice to have the information at our hands, which I think in the past might have been a little bit, um, not done as much as maybe we should have done or could have done, so, anyway, I think it's a good thing, and I think it's a good value,
As far as process goes, the EDC will make the, will get this, and then it'll go to the planning board, right?
Yeah, the EDC will, I think they're actually going to use it to update their master plan to some degree, then it will go to them, and then I think if there are recommendations from the planning board-
And the council vote.
And the EDC, it would come back to the council, and we would, you know, decide-
I saw people, like, who are watching this, that may not have seen the EDC, to understand what the process looks like.
Yeah, well, I, I think, I think that's a good point, because, you know, I think there have been times at the council, and I think a good example was, uh, the zoning that we went through a while back, not to get into all the nuances of that, but sometimes we don't get all the information we need to, to make a, an educated decision, so I think the Economic Development Committee has been, you know, requesting more information so we can make a good recommendation. We have people on the planning board on the EDC, so by the time it gets to the council, you know, we'll all be on the same page, which is, I think, one of the, one of the goals of the whole thing has been, you know, because one group wouldn't talk to the other group. So, now the planning board will be, hopefully, locked in with economic development and the council, so there won't be all that chafing, so to speak, so. Anyway, that's the background. If anybody has any other questions, they can certainly request them. Seeing no lights, please call the roll.
Councillor Wright?
Aye.
Councillor Nazaro?
Aye.
Councillor Bentley?
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein?
Aye.
Councillor Pike?
Aye.
Councillor Levy?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
And other than that, we are done, unless I missed something. Does anyone have any correspondence that they received or, um, closing comments? Councillor Weinstein?
Um, I just, I probably should have brought this up during your report, but for election day scheduling-
Just going to bring that up.
The sooner the better.
Your schedule. I, I am going to be setting out a schedule for councillors to, yeah, be here all during the day, except Councillor Nazaro, um, to be able to work the polls, and I will need a majority of the council at the end to certify the return and assist.
Can I do the eight PM to ten PM?
You can do five to ten PM. Because I, I really need, like, one or two during the day for shifts, and then at the end, I need at least four.
How's the counting, yeah, just go through the counting bit, are we going to need, do all the councillors have to be there for the counting?
I need a majority of the, of the town council to certify it, and that means I need four out of the-
That's more than three, right?
It's more than three.
I just want to make sure.
It's more than three. It's, it's half plus one, so that's, yeah, and, as I said, we're already down one, so.
So, what I would do is send out a, you know, the hours that you're thinking, and let the councillors, uh, email you their choices, so to speak, and then we can sort of tighten it up, is that okay with everybody?